Meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Mr. Rosado, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Abu Dawud?
Present.
Mrs. Columbo?
Here.
Mr. Gersmeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Pontillo?
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Dr. Romano?
Here.
Mrs. Sembler?
Here.
Mr. Perapato?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I ask that we please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
We're going to begin the public forum. Actually, the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, Township of Washington Administration Building, Township of Washington Free Public Library, The Record, Community Life, and Pascagay Press. Okay, we're going to begin the public forum. I'm going to read a statement, and then I will kind of explain it, so we're all on the same page. During this portion of the meeting, the district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on any topics specifically addressed in this agenda or any other questions, comments, or concerns that might be in respect to the operation of their schools. The Board requests that individuals wishing to speak raise their hand and sign the speaker's list via the chat feature in Zoom, given naming and address. But since we're not on Zoom, we're just going to ask that you state your name and address and write it on the pad. The Board asks that a member of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding personnel matters are discouraged and cannot be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. If a matter concerning the district staff members is of interest or concerned to the resident, the matter should be referred to the responsible building principal, superintendent of schools, or the Board of Education, either by telephone, letter, or email. Although the Board may not respond to the items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under appropriate agenda items or new business at this meeting and subsequent meetings under all business or during board committee meetings if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to five minutes in duration, and the public forum will be limited to one hour in duration. Before we get started, I did, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did hear there was a request made by Mr. Stickel to open and to close public forum. And as a board, we have agreed that we were going to grant that. But I just want to be clear to the public that that's not up to open the floodgates for all, for people to come up for second and third comments. Mr. Stickel will be invited to make the opening comment, and then he'll also be invited to make the closing comment if he chooses so. Also, each speaker gets one opportunity to speak for a duration of five minutes. Just to clarify that, that does not mean if you come up and speak for three minutes that you have two minutes remaining. You have five minutes total for one opportunity. Just to make sure we're all set with the ground rules, I asked Mr. Stickel if you would please come to the mic.
My name is James Stickel, and I live at 191 Walnut Street in Washington Township. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at this public hearing tonight. I'd first like to draw attention to how we got here. The request to name the stadium after Vito Traus was first made by several community members eighteen months ago. At the time, a facility could not be named for a community member, but based on the community's request, the Board amended the policy to allow a facility to be named for a community member with a connection to the school district that served as a role model. When the pandemic hit March, understandably, the Board had to turn their attention to more important matters. After this several-month pause, I restarted discussion on the topic, in which the Board realized they needed to come up with a process to handle facilities' naming requests, which took eight months to make. Tonight, my application is on the table to name the high school stadium after Westwood High School's number-one fan, Vito Traus. Since this was first requested, at least twenty-five public comments have been made on this topic at meetings, and almost six hundred people have signed the petition in support of this initiative. I've printed copies of the petition, as well to be distributed to each Board of Ed member. We all know there will never be another Vito, and this Board has the opportunity to make a once-in-a-lifetime decision to impact many people. This is the ultimate test to see if our Board of Ed members will put their personal opinions aside, show the public they were productive for the past eight months in making a policy, and to represent the high ideals of the Westwood Regional School District. Tonight is the opportunity for a Board that has been divided for months to show the community they can unite and make a decision based on what the Westwood Regional School District Committee wants. Vito Traus was a man with a unique and inspiring story, a story of how he gave up a year of his freedom for a year as a German prisoner of war so we could have ours. He may not have been able to finish his senior year of high school or pursue a pro-baseball career, but he did dedicate several years, decades of his life to support the Cardinals of Westwood High School. He don't ever had to come to any sporting events or tell a story to high school history classes, but he did because of how much he valued our community and the kids who live here. It didn't matter whether it was football, volleyball, soccer, baseball, softball, basketball, cheer, marching banner, bowling, because he was always there, hence why he was Westwood's number-one fan. He called us all his pals, and while he may not remember everyone's names, he was always watching and could spark a conversation about your performance when you saw him around town. As a member of the band, I remember my eighth-grade years as a new and experienced member of the band. Whenever I saw him in the bagel store, he always told me to play my horn ladder. He also was the inspiration for my Eagle project, the Township of Washington Veterans Memorial, because my project was something that brought the community together, which was so important to him. What better way is there to honor our pal and number-one fan by naming the very stadium he spent so much time at supporting the students of Westwood High School? Just like Yankee Stadium is the house that Ruth built, this stadium that has been the high school for the past ten years is the one that Vito built, the place he got to see several teams go on to win sectional titles and state championships. Naming the stadium tonight will not just allow Vito to be honored, but also pave the way for future facilities to be named, such as fields, tracks, or gymnasiums. If you don't approve my application for an overqualified and more deserving candidate that meets the value of education, students, and school committee requirements, it will only prove that the policy is inadequate and ultimately will set a precedent that will never allow another facility to be named again. Please take action tonight to name the stadium after Vito Traus. While I will never have the opportunity to look up in the stands and see his smiling face, if you take action to name the stadium, I will have the opportunity to see his name above the press box and know my pal is still here and will always be here. Thank you for your time.
The podium is now open. Just come up to the podium, name and address, and you can begin.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Sneam, and I live at 772 Koch Peak Avenue in Washington Township. I believe this process was started back in November 2019 Board of Ed meeting by Rich Poggi and Heather A. Henry, and has since been championed by Stephen Kalish. I'd also like to commend James Stickel, a current WWRSD student, for continuously advocating to have the stadium named after Mr. Traus. His research, determination, and overall maturity over the last several months are truly to be commended. I'd also like to thank everyone here tonight, especially the young men and women who directly felt the support and affection of Mr. Traus. Like some in this room, I know Mr. Traus from meeting him at David's Bagels in the morning, where I would be greeting with his normal "Hey, pal!" when I would start bringing my daughters to the bagel store with me, the "Hey, pal!" continued, but my daughters were clearly the ones that he wanted to see and talk to. He would always greet them with a "Good morning, ladies, how are you?" He would then chat with them as if they were his own grandkids and especially the only people in the store. He would attentively listen to their stories and wish to them a great day as we left. As time went on and Mr. Vito wasn't in the bagel stores regularly, my girls would ask where he was. When my wife told them that he had gone to heaven, they were absolutely devastated. Needless to say, they don't come to the bagel store with me anymore. Why would they? Their pal, Mr. Traus, isn't there to greet them anymore. Sadly for me, it was only after his death that I learned of Mr. Traus's history in his own words. Hearing that he didn't graduate high school with his friends as part of the Greatest Generation, he went off to fight and battle for my right to go to high school and college, and now to go to the bagel store every day. My respect for him has grown even more. Hearing his prisoner-of-war story is a story I will never forget. I am glad that a simple conversation at the town memorial day parade a few years ago put in motion the steps to give Mr. Traus the diploma he so greatly deserved. I know there's been a lot of conversation on this matter and politicking against it by a very small, noisy minority. Some may argue that a coach may deserve such an honor in a few years, or Mr. Traus didn't go to Westwood High School, but I hope that the Board can look at the incredible and amazing role model that Mr. Traus was during his lifetime and the one he continues to be for so many of us still today. In a world where there are so few real, true heroes, having the chance to name our stadium after a real-life hero in so many different ways seems like a no-brainer to me. His support for all things Westwood Regional High School is beyond admirable. Seeing him wear the Westwood varsity jacket always brought a smile to my face. When people in the future ask, "Who was Mr. Vito Traus and why is the stadium named after him?", students at Westwood High School will be able to proudly say that he was a volunteer war hero, a brave POW, Westwood's number-one fan, but also a kind, gracious, warm, loving, gentle man that I am privileged to have met and, more importantly, honored to have my children be able to call their pal. So rarely in life do we get to meet and get to know someone from our own community like Mr. Traus. I know that I will forever cherish the time I spent with him. So rarely do we get to pay homage to such an incredible individual who shared our own zip codes. Well, tonight is the night to do just that. And again, I hope the Board does right by Mr. Traus and everything he did, he stood for, and the impact he has left on so many young, old, and in-between to this day. Please do the right thing and vote the stadium in his honor. I can't think of anybody more deserving than "Hey, pal, stay healthy and well."
I know I don't look like it, but I am a graduate of this school. Vito Traus was a very good friend of mine. I happen to be a Vietnam veteran, and we were members of the VFW together. And yes, he did a lot for the youth of this town. He was a big supporter of all the Cardinal sports programs. But he didn't attend this school. He went, he lived in Carlstadt, and he attended East Rutherford High School. He's got numerous things named after him back in those two towns. Yes, something needs to be done to recognize him for what he has done for the youth of this town. You want to put a plaque in that field or something like that? Yeah, that's fine. But you've got thousands upon thousands of veterans from this school district that have served their country over the years. In the last hundred years, this country's been involved in at least five major conflicts, and numerous students from this school district have served their country. Maybe you should name something for them, too. But, you know, don't overlook Vito, but to name the field after him, that's going a little too far, I think. Thank you.
So I'm sure you all received my email, and I'm sure I'm in the minority here tonight. But I've been a silent observer to what's been going on with this issue for, I only recently found out about this, maybe the last six months or so. And I kept quiet on the matter for various different reasons, but when I heard that this was coming to a vote, I decided that it was finally time for me to voice my opinion and my experience. So that's why I'm here this evening. And I want to start by saying that I'm extremely appreciative of Mr. Traus's service, sacrifice, and dedication to our nation, and for fighting for our freedom, and don't want anybody that's here or that listens to this to misinterpret that as anything else. I have nothing against Mr. Traus, nothing but respect for him, but I just, I don't think that the field or stadium should be named after him. To give you a little bit of background, I am a 2004 graduate of Westwood High School, where I earned twelve varsity letters in soccer, basketball, softball, and tennis. This is to give you a little bit of insight into my involvement in the athletic community here, as well as my involvement in the high school. I was also a member of the Student Council, Heroes and Cool Kids, and the Varsity Club. I also have two younger siblings that competed in various other sports that I competed in, adding volleyball, wrestling, and basketball to the mix. Throughout our combined years at Westwood High School, eight consecutive years, and thirty-six seasons spent between freshman, JV, and varsity sports, we never once heard the name Vito Traus while at Westwood High School. I first heard the name Vito about twelve years ago when I started dating my husband, and we'd attend my younger brother-in-law's sporting events. I didn't understand "Hey, pal" or anything like that, and I asked my husband, "What is this all about?", you know? And he explained it to me. But I was born in Westwood and raised in Westwood, and from my experience, the Westwood kids at the time that I was in school didn't know Mr. Traus the way that the township kids did. I'm not making this up. I've asked people. That's our experience. So I'm not saying this is the case now, but for my generation of athletes and attendees of this school, that's, you know, that was our experience. I do think Vito was much more well-known with the recent students and parents of Westwood High School than the older ones like me, and I recently posted in the alumni Facebook group to kind of get an idea of what other people felt. And when you consider the following, a lot of people felt like it either didn't need a name at all, or that there were other, more appropriate names. So we have a veteran, Christopher Herbeck, who I went to school with, who was killed while serving our country, and he was a wrestler at Westwood. The post office in Westwood is named after him, the wrestling gym was not. Robert Meado, also a veteran, killed while home on leave. He was an athlete at Westwood High School. Nothing has been named after him. Barbara Luce, an athlete at the school, died in a tragic motorcycle accident. She was a softball, basketball, and field hockey player. Nothing is named after her. Hago Manassian, also a wrestler, died of leukemia. Nothing is named after him. Tyron Franklin was a student-athlete at Westwood, including a football player. He was shot and killed while he was identified as a police officer. Nothing is named after him either. Now, these six individuals, and my list is not meant to be exhaustive, there are others. They competed and attended Westwood High School. We don't have anything in the athletic realm named after them, and I'm not saying that we won't at some point, but they attended and competed for Westwood High School. Vito was a veteran and a German POW, yes, and a fan, but he was not a Westwood High School student or athlete. I think, in my opinion, that a designated section of the bleachers would be a better, more fitting honor. Leave the seat open for Vito. Have a plaque there. Leave the seat open for our pal. When you look into the stadium and see this open seat, people are going to go, "Why is that seat left open? Why can nobody sit there?"" And then they see, you know, this tribute for our pal who had an impact on the, you know, the community, the athletic community, the children, something like that. To me, I don't think the field needs to be named or the stadium needs to be named after anybody. I do think that he deserves some sort of honor and some sort of dedication, and I think maybe a bench or bleacher section where he sat might be more fitting. So that's all I have to say about that.
My name is Heather Henry. I am the proud parent of two alumni, class of 2014 and class of 2018. My community service here in the district includes PSO, Education Foundation, Project Graduations 2014 and 2018, as well as Touchdown Club President and now co-chair of the Vito Traus Memorial Charitable Fund, to name a few. I'd like to express my thoughts on the field-stadium naming proposal myself and Mr. Poggi presented to the Board back in November of 2019, a few weeks after Mr. Traus's death at the age of ninety-four. There will always be a Cardinal on the turf, on the walls, and on the various signs that adorn the district's buildings. The sight of the Westwood Cardinal logo will always spark so many memories for anyone who attended Westwood or whose children grew up attending Westwood Regional. My question for the Board is, though, do you think that logo ever sparks an inquisitive question or conversation? Will anyone ever ask, "Hey, why did they name it Cardinal Field or Cardinal Stadium?" As some have suggested in opposition to our proposal, I say the answer would be probably not. It would seem obvious, right? Those generic names would cover everyone and everything Westwood Regional, those alumni who have passed both tragically and naturally, the alumni who achieved great athletic accolades in their careers here at Westwood and beyond. By all accounts, safe suggestions, no conversations needed. Well, I believe conversations and dialogue are necessary. They help us learn, they help us grow, they help us understand other people's perspectives based on their history and experiences. After all, history lessons are important. Our collective thought when we first proposed naming the field-stadium after Vito Traus was done so in the hopes it would help preserve his undeniable legacy here at Westwood, by at the very least invoking fond memories for the decades of residents and students who were lucky enough to know him, and at the very most provoke those who missed the opportunity to know him to ask the question, "Who was Vito Traus?", and perhaps Google his name and learn his history. Again, history lessons are important, especially in a school. You have and will continue to hear countless stories of how Vito impacted the students here at Westwood and with our combined communities. By all accounts, Vito liked to hold court. He enjoyed conversations. He would never want his name to be associated with any divisiveness or negativity, as some have unfortunately inserted into the dialogue with social media posts on the subject at hand. It is that part that I find regretful and repulsive, actually. Our proposal was never meant to cause such an uproar as genuinely hoped to honor a great man whose life story needs to be preserved by all means possible and told to every generation long after we are all gone. The idea of game announcers for years to come broadcasting his name over the loudspeaker, welcoming residents and visitors to our facility and combined community, is an important tool in the preservation and remembrance the Vito Traus Memorial Charitable Fund was established for. He is a link between the past and the present for our children. We are hopeful coaches could include in their orientation to players each season a brief history lesson so they would know why the field they are playing on is named after him, along with all the varied reasons they should remember Vito. Leaving high school prior to his own graduation, heading off to war in a foreign land, dealing with unimaginable things for an eighteen-year-old, we feel Vito's story and sacrifice would be extremely relatable to the kids attending Westwood. Seeing pictures of him all those years later, living out his full life cheering on our Westwood students, would also help assist in the explanation as to why he was granted such an honor. We would be happy to create and provide visual aids to assist the district in doing so. Thankfully, Vito's presence here is very well documented. We all need history lessons to explain the present. The daughter of an Army veteran myself, I was taught early on my freedom wasn't free. It was something others fought for and died for on my behalf, others I didn't know, and that's okay. I cannot think of a single person, teacher, administrator, or resident, past or present, more worthy, more dedicated, or more committed to our community. He was not only a World War II prisoner-of-war veteran, he was a symbol of family, community, hard work, bravery, compassion, and laughter. With a pleasure the likes we will never experience again, I stand here before you all tonight fighting and standing up for Vito.
Mrs. Henry, your time is up, I'm sorry.
May I finish one line? Directly, I am directly asking you to look into your hearts and have the courage and vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
I just would like to put something into perspective. Vito Traus was captured at seventeen years old in World War II and held in a POW prisoner-of-war hostage camp for two years, eating beans, rice, and only God knows what else, just to survive and own the name, love, and pride in this country and winning the war against the Germans and Japanese, so I can stand here today and fight for him and get the field named after him.
Janet Sobkowitz, 849 Robin Wood Road, Washington Township. As the former mayor, a current school supervisor, and a longtime resident of the town, I respectfully ask that you name the high school stadium in honor of Vito Traus, who had a unique perspective by encouraging our residents of all ages to connect with each other, attend games and events, inspire people, and support our teams. I followed Vito's advice many times. He asked me to come to games to encourage it, and I did, because I realized there that it was important for his goals to connect with people, to create a large-scale, community-type team with his winning ways. After all, Vito was the inspiration for James Stickel's Memorial Plaza at the Township Library. Imagine this boy scout being inspired to design, create, raise funds, and work so hard to complete an outstanding project. Also, as much as we can actually physically see a stadium, a place where, you know, we have outdoor sports and events and a tier-type structure with seats for spectators, I really believe that a stadium is much more than that. It is really a life history where we can remember and honor Vito Traus. For Vito, team consisted of giving his time to support students, using his expertise to help others, being an advocate for schools in town, and being a mentor to others. Just think about this for Vito, okay? He was a very wise man. He could see the forest through the trees, and he was an excellent problem solver. He had the respect and the admiration of the students, the staff, and residents who realized the importance to everyone. Let us remember that Vito's legacy is our unending voice of support. It would be great, and I respectfully again ask that you name the stadium after Vito. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Yay, team!
Hi, Fred Kreitzer, 5 Yale Place, Westwood, New Jersey. I think you've heard everything, you've seen and written, and everybody's supported for Vito over the years, and I just want to put something in perspective. For some of the younger people here, I heard the gentleman talk about his younger kids, and Christine growing up as an athlete, and of course, the veterans, you know, we don't want to forget anybody. But back in 2004, I was the booster president here, and we supported all the sports programs, not just football. And some folks came to us because Vito had been around for a number of years, already supporting most of the Cardinal games and so on and so forth. We came up with the idea of having a Vito Traus Day. Mrs. Hanlon, I'm sure you remember, your kids were involved with the band at the time, and we took it to a vote, and we decided to do it. And it was a great day. We bought him the varsity jacket. He wore it. I still have the videotape. He was happier than you could possibly imagine. And that wasn't just that day. That's what really spawned what we were doing. So for the younger folks that may not have known him, like the gentleman who really started to spearhead this idea, this is something that's been going on for a long time. You know, we live in a divided world right now, and this is somebody who came from the Greatest Generation. And to do something like this in our community, which is something that would be really long-lasting, and I commend you guys all. My kids both graduated from here. My daughter graduated in 2002. She's an educator. My son graduated in 2005 and has been lucky enough to be inducted into the Westwood Hall of Fame here as an athlete. My wife and I spent countless hours here in the community. We love Westwood. We love Westwood. My wife is retiring as a teacher from Hasbrook Heights in two days. And we're My wife is retiring as a teacher from Hasbrook Heights in two days, and we're moving out of here on July 14th, and I'm really upset of that. But I think to come back here, and I can bring my grandkids here to say that's Vito Strauss Memorial Stadium, is something that would be just amazing for you guys to do. I understand the vote, it's got to be a number of majority, but look, as somebody else said, look into your heart, and you know what? Just remember what his smile is all about, the hype, pal, that was genuine, he said it to everybody. And so, you know, you have something here, we have a great two communities here, the Township and Vito was both. He was Westwood and the Township, believe me. I would just say, please, give it the thought, you guys can put your name on the plaque too when you name the field, the Vito Strauss Memorial Stadium. Thank you very much.
Megan Rydell, 2600 Cleveland Avenue. Just to give a little background about myself, I am a senior here at Westwood and have been a part of the soccer and basketball varsity team for the past four years and the varsity lacrosse team over the past three years. Mr. Vito Strauss has never missed a game and has always encouraged my teammates and I as we were heading on and off the field or even when we ran into him in town. An example of Vito's devotion to Westwood Athletics that sticks out to me the most was back in 2017, when Vito traveled all the way to Kane University on a cold rainy day to tailgate with the parents and cheer on the girls' soccer team in a big state game. Vito has forever left his legacy here at Westwood High School and made unforgettable bonds with all of the male and female athletes. As the younger generations begin their athletic journeys, they will hopefully have the honor to play at the Vito P. Strauss Stadium and gain an understanding of Westwood Athletics' biggest fan. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Parapato, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez. My name is Stephen Kalish, I live at 197 Honeysuckle Drive in Washington Township. My wife Grace and I have been residents of the Township for over 29 years, and all four of our kids were students in the Westwood School District. I'm also a veteran, having served as a U.S. Army officer for 19 years, and I'm the West Point Admissions Leader for Northern New Jersey. Thank you for holding this public hearing to consider naming the high school stadium after Vito Strauss. I understand that this is not a trivial decision, and I hope you learn this evening from all these terrific speakers how much support there is for this application in both the Washington Township and Westwood Communities and within the school district. I think there are three main questions in front of you. First, is Vito Strauss worthy of this memorial recognition? Second, is the high school stadium an appropriate district facility for this recognition? And third, is this the right time to approve this application? I'll briefly address all three questions. First, is Vito Strauss worthy of this memorial recognition? Board policy 7250 states a school building or school facility may be named to memorialize the outstanding service of a school district employee or a member of the community who has a connection to the school district and has served as a role model in some capacity. Vito Strauss passed away in October 2019 at age 94. He was a lifelong resident of Washington Township and was well-known throughout the community. He was a longtime member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. He served honorably in World War II and even spent time as a prisoner of war. But what I think distinguishes Vito from every other veteran in the community is that he had a unique passion for the school district and for our students. He supported our student athletes in all sports, both men's and women's teams, and was a fixture at our sporting events for decades. He mentored and encouraged our students to be the best that they can be in whatever they chose to pursue on the field or in life. Vito wasn't great at remembering names, but he knew everyone and just called us pal. He also shared his experiences and wisdom with our students on many occasions. One such example was his lifelong devotion to raise the awareness of the importance of Memorial Day, the only holiday that recognizes those who fought and died for our country. It's my view that Vito epitomizes the term "role model" and is exactly the kind of community member that the board policy seeks to recognize. Second, is the high school stadium an appropriate district facility for this recognition? In his application, James Stickell recommends naming the high school stadium as the Vito P. Strauss Memorial Stadium. Not the high school field, but the high school stadium. Why is this distinction important? I can think of no facility in the school district that is more associated with Vito than the high school stadium. If you look at a picture of the bleachers at any sporting event, you will see Vito right up front cheering on our students. Of course, Vito also attended basketball, volleyball, baseball, softball, and many other Westwood sporting events and varsity dinners. But what a great visual tribute it would be to name our stadium after our number-one fan. This would also provide an opportunity to name the field at a later date after a memorable coach or athlete, for example. Third, is this the right time to approve this application? My personal view is that there is no reasonable argument for delaying this recognition if it's warranted, and there is significant benefit to doing it now. We all hope and expect that our students will be returning to a normal classroom environment in the fall after a long and heartbreaking COVID experience. Wouldn't it be a moving tribute to start the next academic year fresh with a stadium named after our number-one fan, Vito Strauss? One final thought, it is perfectly normal for there to be opposing opinions regarding such a proposal. There will never be unanimity in a vibrant community like ours on any issue. I imagine that if a proposal was offered today to name one of our elementary schools after our first president, or another school after a revered principal, there would be those in our communities who would oppose each of these proposals. Yet today, we have Washington and Jesse F. George Elementary Schools in our district. There may be community members who believe that a school facility should be named after, should only be named after a Westwood alumnus, but that's not what our policy says. On January 16th, 2020, the previous Board of Ed unanimously approved a revision to our facility naming policy 7250 to provide the opportunity to name a school district facility after a distinguished community member. The current Board of Ed unanimously approved updates to this policy on May 13th this year, reinforcing support for the idea that a school facility could be named in honor of a community member. Your role today is to assess the level of support for James Stickell's application and make an informed decision that is in the best interest of our communities and the school district. What a great opportunity this is to demonstrate the ideals of this district to future generations of Westwood students. In conclusion, I would like to reiterate my personal support and endorsement of James Stickell's application. High school stadium after Mr. Vito Strauss. Thank you.
I'm Rich Poggi, 55 Woodcliff Avenue, Westwood. I chair the Vito Strauss Memorial Charitable Fund. I'm also the proud parent of two Westwood High School graduates, 2015 and 2017. I think I want to address a couple of topics. I'm not really going to speak about Vito, I think there's enough information about him, and I hope that you've used the various means to educate yourselves about him if you didn't know him. But I want to talk about a couple of topics. One is just that, in my capacity with the fund and my love for Vito and his family, I'm able to speak many times on behalf of his daughters, to give me that permission. And, you know, they didn't ask for this. Vito would be humbled by it if he was alive, which I wish he was, but he's still alive in many of our memories and our hearts. He would be humbled by it, but he wouldn't lobby for it. And I think that he'd be a little ticked off with some of the negative stuff that's been on social media, that's not what he was about. I realize that people can have varying opinions, that's the freedom we have, but I think that kind of crossed the line. You know, Vito wasn't at games in 1965, and he didn't come to games in the 70s. He came to games when his daughter was in the band, playing, of course. But, you know, Vito was here for whatever you want to put a number on it, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years of games, obviously the last 15 or 20. After his wife died, he came to more games. But Vito never went to a game in this district for his children, he went for everyone else's children. That alone is testament to that. I don't know many people that go to other kids' games. He went to hundreds and hundreds of games and supported thousands of student athletes, male and female, that weren't his own. I don't know anyone that would have ever done that. Next, as it pertains to some of the names you've heard, heroes, Westwood High School students who tragically lost their lives, I was fortunate enough to know a few of those people. I was able to raise money for Tyrone Franklin's family. I administered the Barbara Luce Award for the Westwood Wolverines for almost 10 years. I knew Chris Herback. For those of you who weren't here, that was the saddest, most beautiful day in this town's history, in my opinion, and I've been here 30 years. Chris's mother, Cheryl, a Gold Star Mother, endorsed this field naming in Vito's name because she remembers Vito at his wrestling matches. Very powerful. Lastly, I just want to say again, you have a decision to make, and whatever you do, we're going to support it. We hope it's in the affirmative. But for all those people that you heard their names, we now have a policy in place. I support naming schools and fields and hallways and libraries after anyone, now that we have a policy in place. Let's get all these people recognized, all these Vietnam veterans recognized, everyone recognized. We don't need to know about some of these names from 200 years ago, let's go on a naming campaign, and let's start with Vito Strauss Memorial Field. Thank you.
When you think about people and the importance of education, the importance of family, the importance of competition in sports, service to your faith, service to your community, being a role model, and giving it all for your country. Vito Strauss embodied all of that. He supported and wanted to help every single one who fought for this country, gave their lives for this country. Memorial Day was the most important thing to him. It was my honor to sell signs with Vito Strauss's name on them, his face, and just the American flag to represent all those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. We sold hundreds and hundreds of those signs in support of Vito Strauss and all those who gave their life. I think what Mr. Poggi just said is right. Vito Strauss would be extremely humbled by what we're doing, but I think it's important to the community to name the stadium after somebody who cared so much about the community, went to so many games at home and away, gave so much for his faith, his country, his community, and mostly his family. Thank you.
My name is Kristoff Madaraki, I'm from 740 White Birch Road, Township of Washington. So, tonight, we're mulling naming the stadium after Vito. Personally, I've been a member of the marching band here for the past five years since eighth grade, so really, every game, we saw Vito. He was here all the time, he supported us, he supported all the other sports. As a member of the community, he really supported us, like for example, as a boy scout, he was also a, he spoke to our troop many times and was a supporter of many community activities. You saw him everywhere. Like, if we were going to, on a day trip, you'd see him at the bagel shop, 6:30 a.m., just to strike up conversation, great guy. But I know a couple of people have brought up the subject of naming the field after other people. There's plenty of stuff around the campus to name after other alumni that are worthy, but Vito is mostly associated with being the number-one fan of the football team. Hence, why, in my opinion, it is only fitting to name the stadium after Vito. That's all.
I just want to say I wish I knew Vito during his heyday. I came into town about 23-years ago, and I actually started playing on a softball team with some of these guys back here, and at that point in time, I actually became very familiar with Vito. He was always at the field, he was always at a Friday night game, he was always at a sports event, supporting not just the students, the town, the community, the old people such as us. Vito was actually, you know, crucial to like all of the different avenues and stuff like that. I find it, you know, very, very fortuitous that we're actually talking about actually like naming a stadium after someone such as Vito. I do believe this is actually a great time to do this. I was reminded as I was walking away, this may or may not be true, that I do believe on the day that he passed away that all of the students actually walked out of the school in recognition of him passing away. So, if we're not going to actually recognize Vito and actually name the stadium after him, I'm not really sure who we're going to do this. I know there was a couple of mentions of other folks, don't mean to bring them down, I do believe there were six other like veterans that were also named, but it's not the fact of naming it after Vito, it's actually the fact of giving it a name so that we can remember all of the veterans that actually have come and passed in our time. I do support the recognition of naming the stadium after Vito, I hope you guys do too.
Rich Skinner, 303 Mountain Avenue in Washington Township. I just want to say I'm in favor of naming the field after Vito. I didn't prepare a speech tonight, but this is just going to kind of come from the heart. Vito was basically beloved in both towns, Westwood and Washington Township, and there's a lot of adults that have come up and spoken to you tonight, but I'm going to ask you to do one thing, I'm going to ask you to re-watch this meeting and listen to the students that spoke, because they're the ones that are at the school right now, and they're telling you how much Vito meant to them. I can tell you how much Vito meant to me, but you should really listen to the kids, to the students. You know, just to talk a little bit about Vito, everybody knows who Vito Strauss was, everybody knows that Vito was a POW. I had some great experiences meeting Vito and getting to know him. He once told me the story when he was liberated from Germany, they actually put him in a military sidecar and drove him to France. So, we got together a couple of years ago, and when Vito was honored in the Memorial Day Parade in Washington Township, my Blue Knights Motorcycle Club, which is a law enforcement motorcycle club, we put Vito in a sidecar, and I've never seen the man smile like that. It brought back so many memories, and for us to be able to do something like that for Vito was just a small step. You know, I understand that there's some people that have spoken about being an athlete here at Westwood. I'm a 1985 graduate of Westwood High School, I did play football here, and again, I would just love to see you name the stadium after Vito. Vito was not an athlete here, but he was an athlete. But at the end of the day, Vito was a student athlete, just like the rest of us. And when you're a student athlete, when the athletics is over, the things that you learned as a student are what's going to stay with you. You know, the lessons you learn as a student are going to make you a better husband, a better wife, a better partner, a better father, a better mother, and that's who Vito was. You know, when Vito got out of the military, he chose to raise his children in this community. And I would just ask that you honor him as the veteran and the POW that he was. You know, we live in a world where athletes want to take a knee during the National Anthem, and they have every right to do that. But that's because men like Vito Strauss fought for this country, and they fought for the Constitution of the United States, so these athletes would have the right to do that. So I would just like to remind you of one thing, you know, Vito was a veteran, at the end of the day, Vito wrote a check to this country, and he wrote a check to this community. He wrote a blank check, and that check was good for up to and including the amount of his own life, if that would have happened. So I think we need to honor Vito Strauss, and again, I think this can be the start of naming several other things, other parts. Like I said, we can name the stadium after Vito. A lot of people say, well, Vito was just a fan. Please don't ever make the mistake to think that Vito was just a fan. He was such a huge part of this school, and you guys know that. He mentored kids, he came in, he spoke on Veterans Day, he did all those things. So if we name a stadium after- Day. He did all those things. So, if we name a stadium after a fan, isn't it perfectly fitting? Where do the fans sit? They sit in the stadium, right? We can name the field after an athlete. We can name the wrestling room after Chris Herbeck or something like that. So, I'd just like to say I'm very much in favor of honoring Vito, and I think he deserves it, and I think it's what we should do. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ellen Stickell, 191 Walnut. Thank you to the Board of Education for holding this public meeting. I'm the proud parent of James Stickell. Personally, I am in support of naming the stadium after Vito Trousse. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm going to read a statement from Mayor Colamari. He has a town council meeting tonight, and he asked me to read a statement from him. "I regret that I cannot be with you this evening, but we have a council meeting with many items on the agenda this evening also. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard this evening. I first want to thank the members of the board for their service to the community. I write this statement to urge the board to act tonight, to take the final step in naming the football stadium at the high school after everyone's pal and number-one sports fan of all sports, Vito Trousse. The man accomplished great many things in his life. He was an original and one-of-a-kind, but those accomplishments are not why I urge you to name the field after him. The real reason, what is at the heart of my request, is Vito's undisputed standing at the Westwood Regional School Systems Athletics, number-one fan. Everybody knew him. Parents and students and faculty and coaches, he could always be counted on to be at the games, cheering his hometown athletes and teams on and encouraging and inspiring them to do their best. His dedication and enthusiasm and unwavering support embodied what is best about small towns and small-town school sports. He helped make Westwood Regional Schools more than just a school system. He helped make it a community. By naming the stadium after him, we can honor and encourage that kind of school spirit and pride and dedication. Some may say that others are also deserving of the honor, having the stadium named after them. I cannot be part of that discussion because I did not have the pleasure of knowing them the way I knew Vito over the years. What I can say unequivocally is that Vito was the number-one fan of many different sports and their players. That distinction alone should set him apart from the others for this honor. Vito will always be part of the hundreds, if not thousands, of students' high school experience, and I'm confident those students, some who are now alumni, would agree that naming the field after him would be a fitting tribute to a man who gave them so much and was part of, and now a great memory of their wonderful days here. I am confident in the members of this board. I am confident you all already know what I have said, partially because I said some of it during the December 2020 meeting. I know firsthand that many things in the government take longer than they should to get done, but this should not be one of them. So, please act now. Please vote in favor of tonight's resolution. I have been invited to attend the class of 2021's graduation ceremony this Thursday. What a special honor it would be for the graduates to be the first class to have their ceremony take place at the Vito Trousse Stadium. Thank you, Mayor Peter Colamari."
Good evening. My name is Josh Beatty. I live on 212 West Place in Washington Township. Thank you to the board for all your hard work on this. I know that this is not an easy job, and for your dedication to the community, it's not an easy task, for sure. I am in support of naming the stadium after Vito Trousse, and to give my own personal background on why I think it's important. I've been here in this community since 1970, let's see, 1974, 1976. When I was playing Little League, Vito Trousse was an umpire in town. He would, he would, he would come and he would ump the games as a referee. And I remember playing Little League the first time there was, I was in a vast pitch situation playing baseball, and I kind of froze at the plate, and he was the ump. And he stopped the game, and I thought I was in trouble. And I really got nervous and choked up. And he put his hand on my shoulder, and he said, Josh, calm down. He knew me because he knew my father, because he played softball with my father. So, he knew who I was, and he put his hand on my shoulder. He said, hey, calm down, pal. He goes, choke up on the bat, and I want you to, he moved my feet to where they had to be. Then he took out his little brush, and he wiped the plate off in front of me. And he said, it's going to be okay. He goes, keep your eye on the ball and swing hard. And I did, and I hit the ball. And from that moment on, Vito Trousse was my hero. So, anything after that was really just icing on the cake. But I will tell you this. I graduated in 1996. I wasn't a great athlete by any circumstance, but he did come, any game that I did play for high school ball or football, he was at a lot of those games. Not a ton of them, because, you know, during that time, he wasn't at a ton of them. My sister, who was 11 years younger than me, she graduated around 2003 from this school, he was at her games. In fact, he came to her soccer games. He came to her softball games. So, he's been coming to these games for Westwood Regional High School and supporting these kids, myself included, for years and years and years. He was a pillar in this community. Yes, he was a veteran, and yes, he went through something horrible. And yes, there are many veterans that have given their time, their service, their love of this community. They've paid, in some cases, with their lives. I'm not taking away anything from those veterans. But that's not why Mr. Stickell brought his name up for this honor. He brought this name, his name up for this honor because this guy, when it came to the sports, this town, this community, this school, he was the number-one fan. And for every story that I have, I'm sure there's another 100, 200, 300 stories just like it of kids that have grown up in this community that have, that have had the pleasure of being called pal by Mr. Vito Trousse. And the other thing I'll say about it is this. You know, we don't have a lot of, you know, legendary characters throughout history. You know, they happen, they happen in huge circles, like Santa Claus. You know, Santa Claus. I hope I don't ruin this for anybody, but Santa Claus was based on Saint Nick, right? And globally, he became a legend, right? That's a global legend. But in our community, we don't necessarily have any legendary characters. We don't really have anybody that's legendary, except for one guy. That's Vito Trousse. In our community, Westwood and Washington Township, he is legendary, regardless of the few people who in the '60s and '50s, alumni that graduated during that time, didn't know him. But anybody that came after that, in the late '70s, '80s, '90s, '80s, '90s, and 2000s, they did know him, and he was a pillar. I'm also the, the current scout master of Troop 321. I was a Boy Scout. I grew up in that troop. When I was a kid in that troop, Vito came to my troop meetings to tell me about being, you know, what it meant to be a citizen. Thank you.
Hello, Joseph Sackey Jr., 572 Jackson Avenue, Washington Township. Proud graduate of Westwood High School in 1976. Roberta, I think it's exactly 45 years ago we graduated today. Just, the last thing I thought tonight was I was going to get up here and talk and make a public chat or speech, whatever you want to call it. But hearing everyone talk, I am in support of the, naming the stadium after Vito Trousse. Not only did I graduate in 1976, so I've been here for a long time in Washington Township. I live here currently. My brothers and sisters went here. My daughter graduated in 2007. My son graduated in 2012. It's not just the football, the sports that Vito was involved with. He was involved with everything in our Westwood High School community. My daughter was in plays, the Woodington Players, I think they called them. He would be at those plays, those long plays. He'd be at those long, long concerts when my son played the trumpet and the marching band. If you've ever been to a marching band festival, they're tremendous, but they're very long. And this person was not, was there. A lot of people come and a lot of people go, but Vito was here for an extended period of time. I know a lot of people in Westwood and Washington Township, and I can tell you, it's a tough call, but it's not a tough call when you think about Vito always being there. And I don't want to spend any more time before I pass out here, but I wanted you guys to know that he's a staple of the community, and I support this 100%. Thank you very much.
Bob Stickell, 191 Walnut Street, Washington Township, New Jersey. I'm going to edit my comments a little bit tonight, since a lot has been said that I was going to say. After many mornings going to David's Bagels, I would see Vito sitting with his pal. One morning, I remembered he said to me, pal, you're always in a rush. Sit down for a minute. It just so happened that a point on a hat that day got canceled, and I had the opportunity to sit down and have a conversation with him. From the few minutes I spent with Vito, I knew he was a man with a lot of wisdom. So, whenever I could, I would sit down in a bagel shop and spend some time with him. Over the years, having his son in the school district, I really got to know what Vito was all about. He loved the Westwood School Community, especially enjoyed attending sporting events, practices, parades, town fairs, school theater performances, and pretty much anything that had to do with the children of the community. Also, he loved the marching band, and he loved the cheerleaders. If you were talking to Vito and an athlete or child walked in, you would cease his conversation and direct all his attention to them. You would ask them how school was going, since education was so important to them, or talk to them about how they played in their previous game. I still remember the last poker game he attended on a chilly October night. Even as the temperature dropped, he insisted on staying until he ended the game. I even offered him my jacket or to get him something hot to drink, and he didn't want it. By no means was he a fair-weather fan. He would stay through any weather conditions, and no matter what the score was, or even if it was a successful season. He was simply there for the kids. And he didn't just go to football games. He attended the girls' and boys', soccer games, baseball, softball, wrestling, girls' and boys', basketball, volleyball, and bowling. He would also educate kids in the community about the importance of Memorial Day, and how his time in the military shaped his life. He would come and talk to local scout groups and history planners in Westwood High School. I urge the board tonight to listen to the people of Westwood and the township of Washington. You, as a board member, may have your own opinions, but you were elected and voted based on the wishes of the residents and the townships of Westwood. And I will say, as he told the scouts, the last time he spoke to our scouts before he passed away, he said, what makes a good leader? If you're a good leader, you need to listen to the people who you lead, because if you don't, they will forget you. So, listen to us. Thank you.
Hour is up.
At this point, that brings us to our hour. If we don't have any other speakers, I won't look for the board to extend. I'll just let Mr. Stickell come up at this time. Okay. So, Mr. Stickell will be our last speaker.
First off, I'd like to thank everybody who came out here tonight to speak on behalf of Vito Trousse. I think it's, now it's time for the board to deliberate and make a decision on whether or not to name the stadium to honor Westwood High School's number-one fan, Vito Trousse. You received the formal nomination through the submission of Form 7250, reviewed its merits and feasibility, and formally accepted the application by roll call majority. Tonight, representative members of the public had the opportunity to speak to Vito, speak on behalf of Vito Trousse. Based on the amazing public comments made by members of the community, I believe it is clear that the community is in favor of naming the stadium after Vito Trousse. To make the decision even easier, I'd like to take a straw poll of the public. So, everybody here, if you are in favor of naming the stadium, please stand up. It appears that almost everybody here is in favor. So, based on this, I think there should be one clear outcome on tonight's vote. Based on this, which ultimately should be unanimous. Remember, tonight's a once-in-a-lifetime decision that will impact our community greatly. So, please make the right decision based on what the committee wants. Thank you.
Will now close public forum?
I need a motion.
All right, at this point, I just can't necessarily, so I just need somebody to put
the motion up.
A motion, close forum.
No, no, a motion for the...
I'm sorry.
Under administrative governance, I need somebody to move the motion.
Can you say that again, the motion?
I'm sorry, I don't know. I need somebody to, I'm looking for under administrative governance. I need somebody to move the motion. Dr. Romano?
I'll second the motion.
And Mr. Pontello, seconded the motion. Mr. Abudal, do you mind reading the motion or no? Want to give him this? I thought he had it.
The motion reads as follows. Motion that upon recommendation of the board, that approval be given for the following resolution. Whereas the board received a formal nomination for the naming of the high school stadium through the submission of Form 7250, School and Facilities Naming Application, and whereas the board has reviewed the merits and feasibility and formally accepted the application by roll call majority, whereas representative members of the public had the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proposed individual during the public forum, and now therefore be resolved, the board approves the application and subsequent naming of the high school stadium after Vito P. Trousse.
Discussion? Mr. Pontello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important that the public understand what it is we're doing here. I think it's a very important distinction to make that the only application before this board tonight being discussed is whether or not to name the Westwood Regional High School Stadium, Vito P. Trousse Memorial Stadium. I've looked at the emails that have come in. I've seen the comments. I've seen the suggestions. I've seen some of the commentary on social media suggesting that other things be done, naming Field, Cardinal Field, et cetera. Those are all things that could still be up for consideration by this board, but we can't act on any of those recommendations tonight because... can't act on any of those recommendations tonight because none of that is before this board, and an official application is required in the board policy. The only thing we're here to contemplate tonight is whether or not to name the stadium as requested in the application that was submitted to this board. So, I don't think that anyone's diminishing any of the recommendations made by the public here. I don't think that anybody is turning away any of the suggestions. I don't think anybody is minimizing the contribution of any of the people that have been named in some of the emails and in the commentary tonight about their contribution to this community. But the only point that we're here to discuss and we're here to take a vote on is whether or not to name the stadium as requested in this application. So, I just want to be, I just want that to be out in front of everybody as, as we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Hanlon?
We also need to clarify, sorry. We also need to clarify, if anybody didn't get a chance to see the application, one of the merits of the application is that whoever is named should be deceased three years before an application is, before a naming would be approved. So that is one of the things that we're also voting on regarding to that application.
This is, this is not a public comment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
With all due respect, the board, the public had a chance to speak. This is the board's discussion now, and I just request that no one interrupt our proceedings now. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, that was one of the merits of the application, is that somebody should be deceased three years.
Just gonna clarify and just say, the three-year policy would just require two-thirds majority vote in the policy. It's, just to clarify for the public.
Yeah, sorry. I should've said that part of it. Sorry.
Any other discussion?
If I may. I'm reading this policy here, 7250, School and Facilities Naming. School buildings and separate school facilities, both on school grounds and within school buildings, shall be named only by formal action of the Board of Education. In naming schools and facilities, the board shall strive to honor the traditions and high ideals of this district and the community it serves. A school building or school facility may be named and memorialized the outstanding service of a school district employee or a member of the community who has a connection to this school district and has served as a role model in some capacity. No such individual will be considered for memorialization in a school or facility named during his or her lifetime or within three years from his or her passing unless supported by two-thirds majority of the full board. This board welcomes formal nominations from members of the community for the naming of school buildings and facilities through the submission form 7250, School and Facilities Naming Application. After the board receives a completed naming application, reviews its merits and feasibility, and formally accepts the application by a roll-call majority, the board secretary will post notice for a hearing to be held at a subsequent public meeting. At that subsequent meeting, representative members of the public will have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proposed individual during the public forum. The board will then deliberate and vote on whether or not to approve the application and subsequent naming of a facility. The board reserves the right to change the name of any school facility at any time if the continued use of the name would compromise public trust and reflect adversely upon the district. So that is the policy, as it is written and it's been accepted.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Rosado, roll call, please.
I just wanna make sure I understand, because this is actually our first time, this is the first time this board has actually processed anything like this. So, so we're in, we're in public discussion right now. So, so it's okay if we discuss our views, whether it's for or against?
As long as it's pertaining to the motion on the floor.
As long as it's pertaining to the, to the application and its merits are, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, I have to admit that I was, that I've, in my two-and-a-half years on the board, I've probably struggled with this particular issue just, just as much, if not more than any other issue that we faced, trying to reconcile, trying to frame, you know, how I was gonna make a decision, and really just what the decision was all about. And finally, it came to me today that, for me, it's about the here and now. And I recognize the fact that I'm, I'm a representative of the here and now, the people who elected me. I can only speak for myself, perhaps some of you feel the same way, but I can only speak for myself. I'm a representative of the here and now, the folks who actually put me here. And, you know, in the here and now, we've heard from mayors, past and present, 600 petitioners, parents, students, community members. We've spent a year modifying policy 7250 to provide for opportunities such as this one, specifically to provide for opportunities such as this one, not guaranteeing that we would vote yes, but, but to allow for opportunities like this one. Policy 7250, for me, is different than most of our policies because it relies heavily on community input. While we often tend to focus on the spirit of policy, tonight, we need to focus on the spirit of the people. And that's not usually the way we, as a board, look at policy, but this one is one of those exceptions. We have a student, James Stickel, who sparked a community movement and inspired change even among this board. The students, I'm sorry, that, Mr. Stickel submitted an application that meets the criteria and shows how the person for whom the application was submitted meets the criteria. It's about Vito Traus, the individual, and what he represents, but it's also about what he symbolically represents. And I think we heard threads of that throughout many of the comments that were made tonight. It's not only about the man, it's about the threads of symbolism that travel through so much of what he inspired. The statements about, you know, George Washington, you know, that we live in, one of our, one of our communities in our town, and one of our towns in our community happens to be named after the first president of the United States, I believe, and one of our schools are named after the first president. And, you know, some might argue that there have been better presidents that have come after him, and I'm not here to argue that for or against, but that's not the point. I'm here, I'm here to make the point that that's not the point. The point is more about what that name represents, and if it's worthy, then it stands for all the presidents and dignitaries that have come after him. And I would argue that he's probably inspired a lot of those people. And then there's the fact that he's legendary. I just added that to my list. That was, that was a great point. So, those are just some of the thoughts that helped me to center myself and come to a decision. So, I'm no longer straddling the fence, I'm clearly on one side of it now. And these are just some of the thoughts I thought that might help you, and I would be curious to hear what any of you might have to say, if you'd like to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Price?
So to follow on your here and now and present, not including emails that were received by the board, we had about 56 people in attendance tonight, and when Mr. Stickel spoke eloquently in both his, his opportunities, two were, only two people really spoke that were not in favor of this. When he asked everybody to stand, six people did not stand. Only three students came to speak tonight. And with about 600 names on a petition, with about 20,000 residents between both towns, 9,000 that the township board members represent, 11,000 that the Westwood members represent, it's about 3% of our, our population in favor of the field naming. So those are just some of the stats from the here and now.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Gersmeyer?
I think, I think the public deserves to hear, just like Dr. Romano was doing and Mrs. Price are doing, just to share our, our internal thoughts. I think, you know, I think it does a disservice if we just all sit up here and say yes or no, and not say why. I think we made the process, we tried to make the process as fair as possible, and yeah, it dragged out a couple extra months, but I think the application's solid. I think the, the policy's now much better shaped than it was, even a few months ago. Most definitely, it's in much better shape than it was a year and a half ago. So, there's a lot of people that, that went into making that happen, and most notably, Mr. Stickel. Mr. Stickel's parents for raising Mr. Stickel. Mr. Kalish for spearheading this when it started. There's, we, we live in a time where everything's divisive, including a lot of the things we talk about in these meetings. For the, for the vast majority of the time, I'm not talking about social media, but from what we heard here, we heard a lot of heartfelt stories. We heard a lot of well-spoken ideas, whether people were for the naming or if they were against it. It's actually the one topic we probably heard the least disturbing words spoken at public forum or during meetings. I, I think that's a testament to Mr. Traus, actually. He wouldn't want that. And, and for the most part, I think 95% of what we heard was, was above-board and respectful, and that's, that's a testament to him, too. So, just like Dr. Romano, I've been squarely on the fence on this for months. I've only been in town for 11 years now as a Westwood resident. I coach, I'm heavily involved in coaching various sports over in Westwood, but I grew up in the arts. I grew up, you know, my Little League days were done in seventh grade, okay? My, my trumpet-playing days went further, my singing and musicals and whatnot, that kept going through high school and instruments into college. So, to hear, to hear, you know, support from marching band members and to hear support from fathers in the community that had students in plays and whatnot, yes, they're long. They go much faster when you're in them, let me tell you. But they're long. And thanks, now I'm just glad we have seats to make that a little shorter. And Mr. Kalish made a distinction, too, about the stadium versus the field. If people know me, I'm, I'm a super literal guy. Whether you've only known me for a little while, or if you've known me for a long while, I'm, I'm pretty literal, whether you agree with what I'm saying or not. I'm super literal. So, you know, I'm also a huge sports fan. The Seahawks have, you know, the 12th man plastered all over their, their stadium, right? I mean, that's the stadium. We're talking about the stands here. So, honestly, I'm, I'm still pretty squarely on the fence, but I heard a lot of good arguments tonight about why it makes sense and why we could also honor our other fallen community members or athletes or, or veterans and students and athletes as well, so we can kinda have our cake and eat it too, as it were. So that's, that's my, my internal monologue that's now external. So, this is one of the most important things we've, we've done. And we live in a, in a world where the, you know, we, I don't want, I don't want Westwood and Washington Township to be a microcosm of the national political environment where everybody, no one's listening, but everyone's just shouting, and then if you shout louder, then, then you shout louder, then nobody hears. No, there's hearing, but no listening, right? I don't want this topic to become that, and I don't think it really has, as much as other topics in town. But, yeah, this is probably one of the more important things we, we could do and show support for the community that we don't just hear you guys, we can listen to. So that's, that's my statement for the night.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr.?
I don't, I'm not a great speaker. I just, I'm more of an emotion person, and I can feel the emotions in this room. And I, I too am the ultimate Libra, kind of going back and forth, right Frank? I'm struggling with it, with this decision, 'cause it's huge. It's big, it will have a lasting effect, but I feel the love in this room, and it's powerful, and I appreciate all of you guys for coming out. It's, it's helping me, it's, it's, I'm going back and forth, but I do appreciate all of you guys and, and how much thought and care you each put into what you said tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pontello?
So, I think we have to contemplate a number of things here. You know, we have heard who Vito is. We've heard what Vito stood for, and we have to ask ourselves, what would naming the field after Vito represent? And what would that look like? And when someone asks you, "Well, why'd you say yes?", you know, what, what would that discussion entail? And I think a lot of the stories we hear, heard here tonight are genuine. I think that Vito has, has gone out of his way, and he embodies certain characteristics that we need more of in this world. He's dedicated. There's a level of selflessness that is unmatched with the years of dedication he had to this district. People say he's a number-one fan, but it goes a lot more beyond that. His military service is honorable. Think of the number of prisoners of war that we had and, and what they did for our country. And how many do we have even alive today? Most of them are gone. So, he was a different type of person. His experiences were different than what most people feel, and I think that carries a lot of weight with it. I think that we have an opportunity to do some other recognition. Far be it from me to recommend anything, but you could still name the field Cardinal Field. You could still have a memorial at the entrance to the stadium that is dedicated to all of those who have gone before their time or died in service to this country or under difficult One of the, one of the statements that Mr. Skinner mentioned here tonight, you know, bringing the Blue Knights up and putting them in the, the sidecar, kinda hits home because that was an opportunity for the guys on the Blue Knights to create a memory for him from something that he did when he fought in the war. It's powerful. And I think that for anybody who, who sits back and looks at this and asks the question why, you can, you can name a lot of reasons why you should, but I don't think that you conversely give a, give a lot of reasons why you should not.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Hanlon?
Yes, we've heard a lot of passion, absolutely, from the people that are here tonight, as well as from all the emails we got, some of them from the very same people here, as well as some who could not be in attendance tonight. I did know Vito for a long time, as Mr. Kreitzer pointed out. And it is a big decision that we have to make, and we're not, nobody up here is gonna take it lightly. Please, please understand that, that, that's part of the reason why it did take us so long as, as a body to come together on this policy, to get it right. And I truly feel that every member up here will do the right thing that they feel. There's, there's so much passion in this decision. It's, it's not an easy one. We've been weighing it for months. We've been getting messages for months, emails, phone calls. I'm sure other board members have been talked to by members of the various communities as well as I have. So, just want you to understand that, that we, every member up here has listened and is listening to everybody who has spoken to us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Rosado, roll call, please. Mr. Abudal?
No.
Mrs. Columbo?
I would like to acknowledge James Stickel for his hard work and his passion for this project. And again, I wanna thank everybody who came out here tonight, but my vote is no.
For the reasons I stated earlier, my vote is yes.
Mrs. Hanlon?
No.
Mr. Pontello?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
No.
Dr. Romano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sembler?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Parapato?
No.
Motion doesn't carry.
Okay. At this point, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Ms. Price? All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Wow.